It is 6:00 PM and I would like to call this meeting to order if you would please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please Connie.
Chris Mikowski, here.
Terry Lautner.
Here.
Kyle Travis.
Here.
Jeff Shaw.
Here.
Dave Darga.
Here.
Jordan Gallagher.
Here.
Connie Preston, here.
Thank you. Item four, Declaration of Conflict of Interest. If any board member has any conflict with any item or perceived conflict with any item on the agenda, now is the time to declare that. Okay, seeing none, I'd like to move on to public comment. It is 6:01 and I'd like to open public comment. Rules for public comment. You have three minutes. If you have public comment, please address it directly to the board and not to other people in the audience. And if you don't mind telling us where you're from, we would appreciate that as well. Any public comment?
Hi, Debbie Beaton, Guy Be... or Guy and Tim. We own the farm on Lakeview and also on Donna Road. It's Beaton Farms. What we are trying to do is pull 1.012 acres out of our PA 116 agreement for Guy to build a house on. And it is on the Lakeview farm. What I have is I have a letter from the MDAHPA 116 is from a Jen. Basically, she says that we have Guy's Schedule F and basically saying that he works for us. We do not pay him because he lives on our farm and he... I buy everything, the groceries. So he works in place of us doing a wage. But he does own cattle on the farm. He does do the corn, the... all the grains. Yeah, he does everything on the farm with us. So, and he has put over 1,040 some hours that he has to put in.
Okay.
We just don't have a W-2 for him because we don't pay him for it.
Okay, we do have you on the agenda, so...
I think Connie knew I was coming.
Yes, yeah, you are on there for item 10B. So when that comes around, you're welcome to come up and tell us whatever you want and we'll work on it from there. Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, come on up.
My name is Lou Ann Krantz and I live across the road at Sioux Creek Commons. And I'm... and several people that I live with there are concerned about this house at the end of Lincoln that goes to Cherry Bend Road with all the tires. And there was appliance out there and all the pallets. It's starting to look like a junkyard. And just wanted to let you folks know that we're... we drive pie there all the time and it's kind of becoming an eyesore. I was told there's no... there's no blight ordinance for this township, but... So I don't know where it goes from there, but there are other people that are over there that are concerned about it too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment this time? Okay, 6:04, I'd like to close public comment. Moving on to the consent calendar. The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with in one board motion without discussion. Any member of the public, board, or staff may ask that any item of the consent calendar be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. This evening's consent calendar includes department reports from Treasury, Planning, Zoning, and Fire, minutes from the 12/12/22 regular board meeting and the 12/22/22 special board meeting. Also post audit invoices dated 12/15/22 through 12/31/22. Any member of the board that would like anything removed and placed elsewhere? Or staff? Or public? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion.
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Agenda approval. Any items that anyone would like to add, subtract, change on the agenda? Okay. Look for a motion for the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 8A, Supervising Remarks. You have that report in front of you. Item B, Trustee Remarks. Let me back up one second, sorry about that. Welcome, Jordan and Kyle. Great to have you guys onboard with us. Thank you very much. Okay, trustee.
Also, what's the...
Drywall. Whole fire station.
What... oh.
What's the problem with the drywall?
With the ceiling? What's going on?
Yeah, we had that roof leak about four, three, four years ago and it leaked.
Oh, good. So this is an old...
This has been several years.
Okay, alright, alright.
Yeah, and we got the roof fixed, what, three years ago, maybe two years ago? And the drywall was terrible in there. It's all stained and part of it fell off, so... And it's just been a challenge getting anybody to even respond to try to get quotes.
You don't know any... you don't know any drywallers, huh?
That was subtle. So, yeah, that was a day.
Okay, alright. So trustee remarks.
Yes.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Statements, I guess. On some of the smaller items like the drywall situation and... I would like to see maybe almost like a supervisory report on why we're doing certain things, why we're buying this possibly a snow blower, why we're... what changed?
Okay.
In the township? You know, so we know, kind of a heads up on what we're looking at coming down the pipe. You know, I don't know, damage to the snow blower or this drywall situation, whether it was new or 10 years old.
Okay. Yep, we can do it.
Oh, I had one more question. Whatever happened with the sidewalk crossing Cherry Bend?
The last time I talked to them, somebody from... Somebody from that group that was here contacted me a couple of months ago and I contacted the Leland County Road Commission because it was last... it was up to them. And he told me they had not finished the study yet.
Oh, okay.
So I reached back out to that person and let him know. Told him, you know what? Give me a call in a couple of months.
Okay, alright, I was just curious. I was curious about what happened there.
Quite honestly, I think the Leland County Road Commission dropped the ball on it because when I called them, he said, "Oh yeah, we haven't finished that." So, but you know what? I'm glad you reminded me. I'll call them before that person calls me, so...
Anything else?
Nope.
Trustees, any other remarks? Okay, Engineers Report. Our engineers are here... our engineers are not here, so... Other Officer Remarks. Pete, you got anything for us? Chief? Come on up.
You all have my report, my report for December. We ended the year with 622 calls, requests for service for this department. There's a little bit more information there and I hope to provide some more in next month's report on some of the details of those calls, what our year looked like. But more pressing and unfortunately I didn't get it on the agenda, just found out today. The Assistant to Firefighters Grant opened up today, closes February 10th, which is a major federal grant that we've... it's the grant that funded our brush truck a few years ago. And I would like to begin researching some options. There's cat... different categories. Equipment, apparatus, and training. So we could potentially look for a replacement vehicle and some needed equipment as well as station improvements in this grant. It is a five... requires a 5% match. If we were to be awarded the grant and then to accept the grant, we always have the right to refuse it. But I wanted to get that before you and seek your support or permission to go ahead and pursue that. If that's something you would like, be okay with me doing. So that was something I wanted to get in there for you. Is that something that I should come back on because you guys aren't going to meet until the grant cycle closes on February 10th?
Yeah, we actually passed a motion last month authorizing departments to go ahead and seek grants.
Okay.
And when this happens, you know, a short time and it's closing. So we did authorize that last month, so you'd be free to do that. And then obviously the board has the last word on to accept or not.
Okay, it's a big one.
Yep.
Alright, now we'll go forth and see what I can get.
Thanks, Chief. Commissioner O'Rourke, did you have anything for us?
Yes, sir, I do. Thank you. I need to give my name and all that or whatever.
Yes.
Jim O'Rourke, Elmwood Township. Well, first of all, thank you for what you guys do. Mr. Gallagher, welcome. Trial, welcome. You know, it's interesting going from township to county, but you have a copy of the agenda. There's a lot that we do and as a matter of policy, I will be getting you people the agenda. So if you have any questions, concerns, you got my card, get ahold of me, okay? It's a good bunch of people. I think we're going to do good things. But we should be involved with the township and again, as a matter of policy, I've been talking to Deb Allen. You guys will receive the agenda every time to just pass out, okay? Any questions for me at all?
No, this is...
Really? Okay, thank you.
This is great. Thanks, Jim. And Communications from a clerk?
I just wanted to mention that I forwarded an email to all of you. It was a public notice for a Tom Darga proposal, just in case anyone wanted to comment on it. I believe it crosses... it's a driveway crossing some wetlands, which are in Elmwood Township. And then the actual location, I think of the two houses are in Bingham Township. So we just wanted everyone to be aware of that in case you wanted to comment. And if you didn't get it in your email, let me know. I can forward it again or print it out, but it's many pages.
I think they might be in Solon. They're in Solon.
So, did I say Bingham, Solon? Yep.
Great. Questions for Connie? Item S, Coast Guard Presentation to the Elmwood Marina.
Lady.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Can we ask for Pete Moon to come up? Is that okay?
That's awesome.
I want to thank the board for allowing us on the agenda tonight. My name is Dick Lebanter. I'm the commander for the Coast Guard Auxiliary Lotilla here in Traverse City. Jim Frick is the Vice Commander of the Lotilla. This year, what we wanted to do was honor some specific people for the work that they do on behalf of the Coast Guard, Coast Guard and the Coast Guard Auxiliary. Pete has been wherever he's at. Pete has been instrumental.
Would you do me a favor and just go over to the mic?
Oh, okay.
Our recording guy. Love to hear what you have to say.
Okay. And Pete has been instrumental with not only himself, but his team down at the Elmwood Marina and supporting the Coast Guard in its endeavors throughout the summer and actually year round. Pete has provided us ample space, launching sites, so we can do search and rescue training, training with the helicopters, and assorted marine observations that we do throughout the year to check for pollution and different items that are going on in the community before they become a real problem. Pete also helps us with the recreational boating education by providing pamphlets and handing out pamphlets to people that are staying in the marina and transients coming in and allowing us to do the coveted sticker for vessel inspection to make sure all is good on your vessel. But again, I'd like to thank the board. I'd like to thank the Elmwood Township Marina. And I would also like to thank Pete Moon and his fabulous crew for allowing this to happen. One other note is just, I'm just taking on the role and I just found out we are a volunteer organization. We have 39 people. And this year, we're going to volunteer about 7,500 hours in regards to boating safety and helping people that are in distress and so on, both with surface operations and the Coast Guard Auxiliary also has a flight operation with five airplanes that we fly every single week, 52 weeks a year. But on behalf of the Auxiliary and of the Coast Guard, I'd like to present this to Pete Moon for exceptional service and supporting us in our organization. And if Jim has anything to say, he can. Otherwise, we'll go home. But I thank you again.
Very nice. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Pete, did you want to say anything?
Ken, real quick. Thanks, Jim and Dick. We... I think the thing that comes to mind most of all for our busiest point of the season is the Cherry Festival, Fourth of July week. And it's... we're completely booked already for that week, the minute that opens up with the state. Along with the Coast Guard Auxiliary, we have active duty Coast Guard we work with, Leland County, Grand Travers County, Elmwood Fire Department, State Police, US Army Corps of Engineers, Michigan DNR, even the city of Traverse City. We even let them in sometimes. And it's just the idea of the community, the teamwork, the effort that goes on in our law enforcement, rescue, to know we have the backup, we have the people here. It's good to... every year it's tight, but we get... we always make space for the Coast Guard Auxiliary. We really appreciate the work they do. We have people that look forward to them coming to get their sticker. They actually look forward to them walking the docks and offering the inspections so that they don't get hassled on the water or what have you. So it's... it all works out and I really appreciate these gentlemen and the work that they do, especially as volunteers. So, thanks again, guys.
Thanks. Moving on to old business. By the way, you gentlemen are welcome to stay and observe this exciting meeting, but we're not offended if you want to get up and roll out of here. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And it is very exciting, thank you.
Yeah.
That was a hint that you should stay.
Absolutely, thank you.
God, you kicked them out again.
Yeah. Item... okay, we have no old business. Moving on to new business. 10A, Schedule Public Hearing for TC Whiskey Application for Industrial Facilities Tax Exemption Certificate. So this is what we talked about before. We just need to schedule the public hearing now for it. That's the correct way of saying that, isn't it?
Yeah, well, we approved a district.
The district.
Back in 2021 already. Now they're actually applying to get the certificate. So we'll schedule a public hearing for February 13th. We'll do a motion, but... And then that notice will go in the paper and then it also has to be mailed to any tax collecting authority that it will affect, so Leland County, TCAPS, Beta. And we'll go from there.
Is this application for the entire property of TC Whiskey or just a certain area?
This is for, I believe, new construction on that property. So it's not that they would be completely tax-free on everything. We just... I think it's just a...
It's a new investment that they put in.
Yeah, yeah, and they won't pay as much on the taxes on the new investment.
Right, for a period of so many years.
Yeah, up to 12 years. Yeah. Which they helpfully filled in at 12, so... But that is up to the board.
I move we schedule a public hearing for February 13th. Is that our next board meeting?
Yes.
At 6:00 PM?
Second.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Item 10B, Beaton Farmland Preservation Agreement Amendment Resolution 1 of 2023. Come on up. You're welcome to repeat what you were telling us and add whatever you would like to add.
Well, we just... what, like I said, we're just trying to pull out is like 1.012, I think, is exactly the number. Yeah, acres. We've had it surveyed. We've had it done to the road commission. We've paid the 250 to Elmwood Township already. The PA 116 agreement, the Jen, EYDE has said that we have followed all the qualifications that she needs. It's just you guys are... to say that he's an essential worker. I guess I don't understand how you guys know he's an essential worker. I mean, I don't think anybody really knows us a whole lot, but it has to be something that through the PA 116. So he just... he farms with us. He's got cattle. He helps with hay. He does his own grains. I have his F, Schedule F if you need that. And I also have a thing from the PA 116 talking about transferring, splitting, and releasing farmland agreements. And one of it is allowed to an essential farm employee to build a house. And there's only just a few things. It's a farmland agreement, which we already have. Resolution for approved for the local unit by the government. Legal description of the parcel that is being pulled out and we've already got that through zoning and we rezoned the rest of the farm to take that 1.012 out of it. The legal description, that's there. A listing of taxable values. We've already got that through, I think her name is Barb. Is that correct? We've already got that done. And then just the guy's Schedule F. Since there's no payroll records, we don't have that. We have the Schedule F. The Jen said that that was totally fine with her. I just have to basically fax everything to her that I have with the Schedule F and all the paperwork that she has. So do you have any questions for us or what do you... is there something you need?
Go ahead, Connie.
How big is the farmland? Because I've...
It's like 87? 87 acres. It's split in two parcels. There's a road dividing Lakeview one way and Lakeview the other way. And we're taking it off the far end of the Lakeview on the...
Far north end.
The far north end. It's just one acre where the driveway is going to the back field. It's just right off there. It's right past the Chinese elm, yeah. So it's just, it's like 1.012 acres. We could take, they said, up to five, but with conversation, a minimum... A minimum was an acre. Because we don't really want to give up a whole lot of farmland to have this house in there. He's having a little house, so...
No, I just said, because I was trying to look through the stuff and I saw...
I have a thing where...
It's gotta be, I think, 40 acres for it to qualify for this program, but then there's some exceptions and I just didn't know if you were breaking that size or...
Yeah, according to Jen, she said we were good to go from the PA 116. And she is... I got a letter right here. I would like that back. I don't have that. But I have a letter from her, because that's got her email address. I've got to mail it to her. If you're welcome to give her a call. She said if you guys have any questions, her number is on there. And... But I have Guy's Schedule F and according to our tax guy, we're good there. I have our survey from Onan. I got the road commission all done there. We've got our taxes. They are all unpaid up until February. And we defer our payment on our taxes, so I don't pay. In the summer, we do it all one time a year.
So the intention is just to build a house. Any outbuildings or anything?
Just a house.
Just a house.
Also a garage.
Just a house. And from a zoning standpoint, we're good on that? That's been... okay, verify. Okay.
I may emotionally approve the request to release the described parcel, one acre, whatever, to the farmland preservation agreement for the Beetons.
Support.
It's Resolution 1 of 2023.
1 of 2023.
Okay. We have a motion and support. Discussion.
Basically, it's an administrative thing. They have the right to do it and we just have to approve it.
Yeah.
PA 116 is a... it's a state program. And when you enroll, the town board has to see a copy of it. And when you make changes, the town board has to see a copy of it. So it's basically, if we don't do it, they'll sue us and we'll have to do it anyway.
Yeah, they said it's approved. I mean, she said that it's approved, so, you know, basically. I have to be here for this, she said. So if you say no, then I have to say, "They said no," and then she's going to say, "Okay."
Debbie, we're just going to make a copy of that so I can put it in the file.
And just because I was trying to figure out what this was. Do we... is it still PA 116 of 74? Because technically in the code, I think that's...
That's when the law was written.
Okay, but I think this is...
Public Act 116 of 1974, that's the...
This was at least when I looked it up, repealed?
No, it's never been repealed.
Okay, maybe I read it wrong.
There's been modifications made to it over the years.
Because, yeah, it was all over. Like other townships actually have like stuff about like how to do it and the process and do it's got a nice explanation. So, other than that, so this is good resolution?
Yeah, that was on their website.
Okay.
On the state's MDAH's website.
I have a thing, if you guys need this printed out. I don't know if you guys... it's got a lot of information and it... most of it's our stuff. I don't see why you'd... But, I mean, it's got... this is from the real estate from Barbara. I mean, that's... you guys get... thank you, dear. Onan surveying. It just says the property description. That I think I faxed to you already, didn't I Connie?
I think Barbara would have it.
Okay, yeah.
If you had it right here.
Yeah, she took a copy of all this stuff.
Yep.
And then I got Connie's letter. And this is agreement from PA 116, everything there. I have a letter to Elmwood Township for you guys. Do you want to see that?
They have that.
You have that? Okay. Yeah, so this basically is everything there. I've got our PA 116 agreement. I got Guy's Schedule F. You know, saying that he's got chemicals, feed, fertilizer, freight and trucking, repairs and maintenance, seed, equipment, cattle. Everything's on there. So his Schedule F has it all on there, that he does farm.
Yeah, I know he farms.
Yeah. Yeah, there's no question in that. It's just going through this, so...
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, roll call, please Connie.
Terry Lautner.
Yes.
And Kyle Travis.
Yes.
Chris Mikowski.
Yes.
Jordan Gallagher.
Yes.
I'll vote yes. And Dave Darga.
Yes.
And Jeff Shaw.
Yes. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item C, Confirmed Special Meeting for 1/30/23 for a public hearing and consideration of approval of the updated Parks, Rec, and Open Space Plan. Sarah?
It's still out there. It's still... yeah, it seemed very actively out there. Yeah, but...
Hi, so I've included kind of an update in multiple zoning administrator reports. This was actually advertised just as a public input session for 1/9, but I actually found out after I sent in the advertisement that we also needed to advertise for a public hearing. So it's my understanding that you all have agreed to, or at least a quorum has agreed to a special meeting on the 30th. It's been advertised accordingly. So this is just kind of to confirm that date, so Connie doesn't have to hand deliver notices to you all.
And that would be at 6 o'clock?
Yeah, what's the time? 6?
6.
Yeah, in fact, we'll just make it a motion.
Yep.
I move that we schedule a special meeting on January 30th at 6 o'clock PM for the public comment and public hearing on the Parks and Recreation Plan.
Support. We have a motion and support. Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes.
We're trainable.
Item D, Marina Committee Appointment. Judy Platt is a slip holder down there and was interested and we need to fill a place in the Marina Committee.
I move we appoint Judy Platt to the Marina Committee for a two-year term.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? All in favor... All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Fire Department EMS Special Service Level Upgrade Discussion, Chief?
Hello again. I'm basically looking to get support from the board to start investigating the feasibility of us going to, of moving to an ALS service. That's what is coming down, that's where I'm at. I'm not saying that's where we're gonna be, but I'd like to start getting deeper into the weeds on it and have the support of the township board. We've been providing EMS service for a long time, since before I joined the department, and it wasn't until we went full-time that we really started doing the primary care and ambulance transport, and that's been very beneficial to, to the department, to the citizens. And we got a quality crew that's providing quality care, and consistently, and we've had several questions, anecdotally, out in the field, you know, why are there more than one ambulance, or having to stop and pick up paramedics into our ambulance and continue on to the hospital, and, so there's various moments of conversation. And why aren't you guys ALS, is a question that we, or why aren't you paramedics typically, is the question, so. I think there's an opportunity here to just start looking at it. I know when we went for our millage recently, that it was left off the table, so that we, and that, but to be looked at later, and I'm just saying, is it later yet? I expect there to be some good discussion, I know there's various models out there, there's data to be looked at. Do the citizens even want it as a whole, is it something that they would be willing to support? So, I figured the Public Safety Committee would be the best avenue to pull together and start hashing this out, and just looking for that opportunity to start doing it, so.
Okay. Well, I think that would be an appropriate route, would be to have the, the Safety Committee, okay, Public Safety. And I know, I, as, in here, I've had multiple people come in and ask about that, about why we are just BLS. Specifically, you know, a lot of people across the street ask about that. I know it's, obviously, it's more expensive, you know, one of the concerns I have, I guess, and I don't think this is any secret, you know, MMR perhaps isn't as good as, as they could be. And we do pay them $250 each time that they do an intercept for us. When our contract is up with them, my concern is, we're kind of a hostage to them. Like, they can pretty much charge us whatever they, I mean, renegotiate the contract, we don't have a lot of footing if we want to continue to have intercept, so. So, that's one of my concerns, you know it's expensive, I know we've kind of stayed away from that. But personally, I think it'd be good to have the Public Safety Committee at least start the conversation. Dave?
I'd like to see a cost analysis for staffing, equipment, ambulance, whatever we would have to improve, upgrade, just so we can look at it along with this Safety Committee looking at it. Because certainly there are fees incurred for everybody, but it's gotta be something that we weigh, especially to our next election.
Yeah, there's, there's lots of questions to be asked, and there's different models out there to be explored. Is it us that becomes, is it the Elmwood fire staff that becomes paramedics? Or do we hire in a specific paramedic, and what kind of service would that be? So, there's, there's, there's options out there, it's just one. The, the cost analysis is definitely something that's been on my mind. Is, there is an initial investment into equipment, and, but then there's a balance of, we would be able to recoup more as well. And when does that, we're never gonna get ahead of the curve on, even with our existing service. It's, it's supported by the taxpayers, and we recoup, we recover costs where we can, and we would be able to recover at a higher rate if we were ALS, providing that service. So, it'd be interesting to get our billing company involved and see what they can project, even looking at historical data. So, get them involved with it as well, and see how that might balance out.
As much information as possible, so we can analyze it.
Yeah, Connie.
Along with that, if you're, if you're looking at it, like, in your notes, we, we lost someone, Kayla Hatfield, and it looks like we lost her because she went and got a paramedic job. I guess my, not that this is the end-all or be-all, but looking at, thinking about, talking to us about, like, what does that mean for our employee retention, like, what plan we pick, what, what style you go with, I don't know, I think that's, I know it's always been a concern, is, is this something that helps us be more of an end point than a pass-through point, is, I think, an important question.
I, yeah, we've, we've had several people come through the department that have gone off to paramedic school, and a couple of them have left the department to pursue that part of their career, whether it's been fire, paramedic, or just taking a paramedic job. So, and we'd definitely make a note to put that into the, on the list.
Any other questions or thoughts with Chief? Do we want to, kind of by consensus, just say, let's get the Public Safety Committee involved in this and get some information back to this board from them? Is that what we want to do it?
Sounds good.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll do that, Chief.
All right. Meet with you in the near future and...
Yeah, in the next couple of days.
Okay.
Come on and sit down, sounds good, thank you.
Before you leave, Chief, I got a question about his report here.
Yes, sir.
The grain bin fire, was that just a pile of corn down there on the ground?
No, it was a, you hadn't seen any of the pictures, huh? Like a 300 and something, 320?
319 feet.
Diameter. 25-foot-high sidewall.
And then grain bin, of course.
Oh, okay, so it was a contained pile of corn on the ground, basically.
Originally.
Yeah.
Burnt the roof off of it, and then they were chasing it as it fingered through the, the corn.
Popcorn cut flying over.
Dodge kernels.
Well, at least you were well-fed down there.
What's that?
At least you were well-fed down there.
If you like popcorn.
Bring your own.
Bring melted butter. Yeah, it was a big fire, and that one was a, a request by Mavis, and there was, it was a pretty interesting operation for us to be involved with. There were like 14 tankers and a shuttle supplying large volumes of water to this thing to keep it cool and to get ahead of it. And if it wasn't for having a resource like Mavis deployment, we, as a township, may need this at some point. But in that community, small community, being able to just make a phone call and get 14 tankers there to take over for the people that were exhausted, allows them to get ahead of the game instead of chasing their tails, and that's what happened. And then, so we were only there for eight hours of actual operational time, and the rest was dry, and so, it was a good, good scene.
Thank you, Chief. Consideration of snowblower purchase for the old fire station recycle site. So, the reason this came along is when we got that big snowstorm, Duane was down there trying to shovel out the old fire station because we only have one snowblower, and it's up here at the, at the new fire station for them to use. So, and there was about a three-foot drift going into the entryway, and then all along that sidewalk, running north and south, was a big drift. So, I went down and shoveled it, and decided we should look at, and Duane and I talked, and we talked in the office, decided maybe we should look at a snowblower for down there. My intention on this is to show you what new ones are, and what I would really like if we decide to get one, is I'd like to maybe not to exceed cost. And there's a lot of good-used snow blowers online that I think are almost new, that we'd probably get for about half the cost. But, you know, to have Duane or any of our grounds crew down there trying to shovel that out, I, you know, in between the bins, it was the same way, there were big drifts in there, and we can't get between there with a snowblower. So, having something that they could use down there to just blow out that entryway and between the bins and that sidewalk would be really helpful. So, that's where this all came from. So.
So, you're not looking for a battery-operated snowblower?
I wanted to give you guys the options, so, I mean, I, I got you a bunch of quotes here.
You got a lot of options, yeah.
I mean, 21-inch single, single-phase, and 22-inch, or 24-inch, two, two-stage, and then Ferguson's, all they had additionally was a 28-inch. But I just kind of wanted you guys to see what was out there as options, and, you know, if you make a motion to not to exceed, I can probably find a decent one online, if you'll trust me with that, and we could just get a used one down there. Because they're not gonna use it that much, maybe not at all this year, no, but, and it's not for, they won't be using it for a long time, but for those guys, they need an electric start, they need a self-propeller. So, but I did want you to see that there's electric ones out there too, if somebody wanted to consider that, so. So, something like a motion not to exceed, you know, the 24-inch from Lowe's or the 24-inch at Home Depot, the Toro, like, was that a Toro?
Yeah.
Troybill.
Troybill.
Then Troybill, you know, some, something to, just so you guys know what a new one is, and hopefully I can find one for about half that online, so. That's what this, that's what started this.
I, I would like to see us get a gas-operated, reasonable, normal, tired snowblower.
Yep.
And...
Right now, on Facebook Marketplace, it just got listed a couple of days ago, there's a Troybill that looks almost identical to the one on the last page for $450.
I, you know, Troybill is, in my estimation, not the best product in the world.
Yeah.
But, you know, I would say that, I would like to see maybe a not-to-exceed $1,200. Just throwing out a figure right out now.
Okay. And do you want me to look for a good-used one, is that...
I would assume yes.
Okay.
Because there are a lot of good-used ones out there.
Yeah. Is that a motion, as Jim said?
That would be a motion, yes.
Okay, support? We have a motion in support, discussion? Anybody have a particular brand or anything they want me to look for, or...
I would look for an Aaron's or something like that.
Okay.
They are good-quality units, they don't wear out, and that, that's the bad part about a lot of the Sears, Grassman's, those kinds of things. Troybills, they are, they work fine until someone really starts using them, and in our case, it should be able to be used in different areas.
Okay, Aaron's, Toro?
Toro's a good one, yeah, Toro's a good one.
Simple tide ones, the orange ones.
Okay.
I would, I don't know what he's got or not, but maybe like an M and E, too, because generally when they sell, you're gonna pay more, but someone actually went through it and made sure it works and gave it an oil change, and...
They have a bunch of them on their website, I was looking at that specifically.
There's a lot of them out there.
So. All righty, so we have a motion, support, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thanks, you guys. Discussion of potential grant slash Brewery Creek parking lot improvements. So, day after tomorrow, the county needs the information from me for this Brownfield grant. And basically, Trudy sent me, well, you can see the email, she basically wanted the township to, to commit to covering whatever the cost difference would be between their grant money and, and what the balance is. Well, we've already committed to spending the money for Brewery Creek, so essentially, we're just saying, yeah, we're gonna pay for it, and if I can get, if we can get a couple hundred grand toward it, that'd be awesome. So, so whatever we can get in grant funding is gonna be, you know, a bonus for us. So, all she's looking for is a motion from us that says, yes, we're gonna cover the, the cost to take care of Brewery Creek, you know, the difference between what they give us and what the actual cost is, so.
I move that the board agree to pay the managing funds if Elmwood Township is awarded the Blight Elimination Grant for the Brewery Creek Parking Lot Improvements.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion in support, any questions on that?
I have a question.
Yeah.
We get an upgraded or updated plan, correct? So, if we get $200,000 from the town, from the county, and then we're also kicking in 200, our original cost was not that amount, it was much cheaper, so you're going to improve that.
Yeah, so the original cost, the last original, the last quote we got from them was 413.
Right.
From their engineers, and that included cleaning the drains and everything. So, and you saw in my memo, as long as we're applying for these funds, I said, you know what, add on that west end and tear out that stuff.
Right, so.
So, that came up to 441, I think.
Okay, all right.
So, so, yeah.
Just so we know, what we're spending for the upgrade.
Yeah, yeah. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you, you guys. I think we have a pretty good chance of getting that, so.
Good, good.
Payment of invoices, item 11.
Make a motion to pay the invoices in the amount of, and I hope this is right, $23,239.57.
I know, I'm looking at it.
This is a low one.
Well, we still have another special meeting, I might have to throw that...
Oh, yeah, because I, this one's extremely low.
I'll suck at that if you want to.
Yep, you're, you're the support.
Who had a motion in support by Connie?
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Great. Item 12, Extended Public Comment, it is 6:46, and same rules apply. Any public comment at this point? All right, I'm gonna close public comment, and if there is nothing further, this meeting is adjourned at 6:45. Thank you, everyone.